Well, good morning. Like to call the meeting to order. Row call, please, Mr. Scott.
Mr. Bennington?
Here.
Mrs. Downs?
Here.
Mrs. Eubank?
Here.
Mr. Lorimer?
That was close. Here.
Mr. Pullman?
Here. Now, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, welcome again to this morning's meeting, online or here in person. Again, we thank you for attending today's Board of Education meeting. We care about our staff, our students, our families, and our guests. And please note their exit exit to your left and your right. There's AED located right outside the door. You're located at 140 East Indian Avenue. And again, thank you for supporting our Perrysburg School District. At this time, we need a motion to adopt the proposed agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Row call, please.
Sorry, who moved and who seconded it?
I moved it.
And I seconded.
Eric was second. You'll see that a lot, John. We gotta keep it balanced, you see.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Lorimer?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes. Okay, at this time, I go to item number three, Mr. Haas' superintendent's report.
All right, thank you very much and welcome. As we pull up the presentation, the, just a reminder, you know, last year, as we were at this point, there was a lot of confusion and we were really outlining how school was going to look like for that year. And we hadn't been in school since the previous March in person. And we shared what our plan was in July and we're continuing to refine it. So when we look back at the work session last August, which we were all on Zoom, and we were just reviewing the the plan and answering questions and addressing some of the things that you had heard from community members, which is always very helpful for us. So fast forward to a year later, and we're talking about opening up schools and in person, so that's a plus. We're talking about returning to school in an environment where there is less transmission of COVID, and certainly that's a plus. And we're looking forward to, you know, having our students and our staff all together. One thing that hasn't changed is obviously the concern over COVID and the fact that we have to continue to monitor, to be vigilant with what we can do to help prevent the spread of COVID. And so this draft plan is a draft because it's changing. So we updated this plan and we had administrative team meeting yesterday, so it was important for us to share that plan with the administrative team to get their feedback, to make sure that what we were including in this reflected what their understanding and what their capabilities were. And it helped us to get their feedback. And the one thing that we understand with COVID and the things that are happening, especially relative to schools, is that things are changing rapidly. So from the July board meeting to the to today's meeting, there's been some subtle changes to things that have been announced by different agencies. We'll talk about those. And yesterday at four o'clock PM, we had the Wood County Health Department issue a statement. So we had to kind of huddle and look at that statement. Did it change anything that we were proposing? And I don't know, Brooke and Sarah, I don't know, and I apologize now, but sometime after nine o'clock, we were texting, you know, about the presentation and different data points. So it's a moving target. And what we're sharing today is where we are today, but in two weeks, that certainly can change. And we talked a great deal about flexibility with this plan. We demonstrated that flexibility last year when there were more cases, there were more concerns. We made adjustments to the schedule when things got better and there was less transmission. We made adjustments to the schedule and students went back more face to face. So this upcoming year, that flexibility, that reacting to the number of cases and the spread is going to continue to be what we've done. And we're saying that with a track record now of actually doing what we say we're going to do and pay attention to the data that's in our community, that's happening in our schools, and then making adjustments to that. When you watch the news, the national news across the country, you see all different kinds of reports about things that are happening. That's important for us to keep tabs on. But what is more important for us is actually what's happening within our school walls and what's happening within our zip code and our state and our community and our region. So with that in mind, we wanted to share our, you know, just an update to the draft plan that we shared. Not significant changes to it, but I think there's some stress things that we want to stress as we move forward. As we did last year, we always began our presentations with data. And I think that's always helpful to really distill what is really happening in our community. We don't have any school data right now because frankly, the students aren't here. Yesterday was the first day of official practices for student athletes. So this is really the first foray into this data collection. So July 29th, Wood County Health Department shared that there are 32 new cases in that week. And when you compare to where we were last year during the school year in November, where we had probably at some point 32 cases in Perrysburg schools alone. But today, we're talking about 32 cases throughout the entire county. The week before, we were at eight cases for the week throughout the entire county. So this is something that we're going to have to continue to monitor. It's certainly something that the Health Department is going to monitor. And it is certainly something that we're seeing in other areas of the state increase rapidly. So going from eight to 32 across the county is still talking about county numbers, not our zip code, certainly not our school community. But it is something that we want to pay attention to. And so that's where we are. The number of looking at the age breakdown historically, so this isn't a weekly update, but this is the whole period of time that they've been tracking COVID here in Wood County. You can see the bulk of increases. There are the ages of who's been most impacted in the 20 to 29-year-old. And then you can see the 30 to 40 and 50-year-old and then trailing downward. The zero to nine is the least and then 10 to 19 is one of the least, zero to nine with very few cases. And then 10 to 19. And if you recall last year in our school buildings, we saw that too, where our elementary numbers were significantly lower than our junior higher high school numbers. So this trend fits with what we experienced last year, what we understand about this. When it comes to deaths in Wood County, tragically, you can see here that there's been a number of deaths due to COVID. The good news is there's not been a reported death under the age of 20 in Wood County. So that's important to keep in mind as we talk about this. Certainly, the Delta variant is a different kind of acting COVID agent. So it's important for us to respect that and understand what the data says. The other thing that I wanted to point out, according to the Wood County Health Department, the vaccination rates for our zip code 43551, which is the Perrysburg School District zip code, is the total population. So this is the population from birth to over 100 and everyone in between. And of that population in our zip code, 67% have been vaccinated, which is a great number. Of the eligible population, and this is zero to taking the zero to 12 out because they're not eligible for the vaccine, we're at 79.64%. So as we looked at our back-to-school plan, we factored in what's happening in our county, which is eight the week before, 32 this week. We looked at, you know, the other data that I shared with you in terms of the age, the impact of COVID on different age groups. And then we looked at the vaccination rate in our community, which is very high. That will help build up barriers for the disease to really spread widely throughout our community. And we understand that people in our community have contact with people in other communities where that rate is much lower. So we don't live on an island. So we have to understand that around us, other areas don't have these kind of numbers. But for us, the households that our students are returning to, you know, seven out of 10 people who are eligible for vaccines, six out of, you know, six out of 10, seven, eight out of 10, depending on how you want to look at that, have been vaccinated. And that is going to create a significant, you know, barrier for that disease to really push into our community. But the chances of it happening are of course real. So moving forward, when we spoke on July 19th, there's been some things that have come out, clarifications that we wanted to share with the board that we'll cover. Transportation, the Ohio Department of Health has come out with recommendations, the CDC, OHSAA guidelines. And at four o'clock yesterday, the Wood County Health Department released a statement that certainly will review. And again, looking back at last year, there wasn't, looking back at last year, there were mandates as to what we could and could not do. And that drove a lot of our conversations, that drove a lot of the questions. And we were seeking clarification for those things. But today, without, with the exception of transportation, there hasn't been any mandates issued. There are certain levels of recommendations issued by different agencies, and we'll talk about those things. So the flexibility for this upcoming school year, that's the key word that we want to keep in front of people. And as we return to this school year, we are strongly recommending that those students and employees who are not vaccinated wear a mask. That aligns with many of the other recommendations coming from different, the CDC or Wood County. And they've even begun to take steps further since our July 19th meeting, saying that everybody should be wearing masks in certain situations, in certain areas where transmission is very high. And in some cases, they've said that in the school community, everyone should wear a mask. That's what the recommendation is. And our recommendation at this time is that those students and staff that don't have, that haven't been vaccinated should be masked. But we're leaving it up to those individual families, individual staff members to make those decisions at this time. If the cases increase in the community and in the schools, we'll work with the Wood County Health Department and we'll begin to take steps to mitigate that spread. And we know what those kind of steps are because we were here last year. That could include masks being worn in certain areas where there is spread. So if we have a building, we have a grade level, we have a classroom, we could be asking people to wear masks to help that. So if a number of students in a particular class are positive for COVID, the county will follow and we'll talk a little bit more about that process of tracking and quarantines. But we could see social distancing being pushed out more. Right now, we're asking people, and we'll talk about this, we're asking people to do all that they can to social distance. But if there's beginning to see spread, what's taking place, we may have to begin to make changes like we did last year with lunches and other things. So we're really hoping it doesn't reach that point. Based on the data that we have today, based on where we are, we feel that returning under this plan is a great jumping off point. But again, that flexibility is really what's key. And if things begin to change, obviously, we're going to have to reflect that in our operations, which is exactly what we did last year. The, so the cases that increase in the schools, we'll work with the county, and we've always done that. Self-help screening is going to be very important, and that's going to continue. And we'll talk more about that. And again, as I just mentioned, our plans may change as the numbers in the county change. And I think that's true of any type of agency and business here that is trying to do what it can to protect their employees and customers and certainly our students. And this information in more detail can be accessed on our school webpage, the continuity of service plan, so the COVID-19 tab that's on our website, click on that and there's more information available. So as I mentioned yesterday, after we presented the draft plan to the administrative team, got feedback, began to make sure and answer questions that they had to make this better, the Health Department released the statement and we have portions of it here on the screen. And currently, the Wood County is currently recording about 25 cases of COVID per week. They said that if our county reaches 50 or more cases per 100,000 in a seven-day period or a positivity rate of 8%, there will be substantial transmission in Wood County. So they have different levels of transmission and they're just notifying us that if this trend continues, they're going to change what status they are in terms of the transmission rate in the county. And you're seeing that in other areas. They went on to add that the Delta variant behaves differently than the other variants, and we understand that. And of course, they're prepared to change their strategy. So the county is saying essentially what we just said. Based on the numbers, they too are going to look at making some changes. You know, and it talks about the increase easily, more so than other variants. Infections in fully vaccinated people happen in a small portion, so they're really suggesting getting people vaccinated. So those of, those out there that are wondering, thinking about it, certainly they're encouraging them. Now is a great time to do that. Because they add that most vaccinated people are protected from serious disease and hospitalization. Those that aren't are the ones that are getting into more trouble with the virus. That's what's being seen across the state. And so that is, you know, what they're recommending. In most cases, those who are vaccinated are protected from serious disease and hospitalization. The best way to protect yourself against COVID is getting the vaccine. Adding masks indoors will help further protect those in our community who can't get the vaccine, including children under 12 and people with health conditions that limit the effectiveness of vaccine. So our decision to begin the school year with, you know, strongly recommending that those folks wear a mask falls in line with what we're seeing from our county. The one thing that I wanted to touch on is this, because I know, and it kind of came up in our conversations yesterday, and I know it's come up with other families. And people are saying, you know, we just don't understand this. The kids have been going to Cedar Point, they've been going to soccer camps, they've been going to, you know, campgrounds, all these things, shopping and movie theaters, all the things that have been happening, and they haven't had to wear a mask at all. So why in the world is a school even talking about masks? And I think that's something I wanted to pause and discuss a little bit. And schools are a little bit different than businesses, because right now, there is no state law that compels students to go to Cedar Point. Cedar Fair may like that, they may have even lobbied for that, but right now, that is not part of the Ohio Revised Code. However, and with that, there are families that are making the decision that we're not going to have our children go to Cedar Point or the movies or do all the things that I mentioned before that most parents and people in the community are seeing. And it might be because their child, they're taking extreme caution. It might be because their child has some type of illness or disease or sickness that prevents them from getting vaccinated or makes them more susceptible. Now, the law says that every one of those students have to attend school. So this is why we have these conversations. This is why we have to take these steps to mitigate. This is why we have to have a plan in place so that if there is a rise, we have to make adjustments. The movie theaters, you know, this is our policy, wear a mask if you want to. If other people don't want to, they don't have to. However, those families are saying, we're not going to take that risk. We're keeping our child who might have cystic fibrosis or otherwise, you know, immune compromised. We're not taking that chance. But when it comes to school, they do have to come. And we are their school. And so that's why we are spending time talking about the steps that we do. And soccer camp and Cedar Point and the movie theater and all those things are open and people are able to go. But we serve a community that is compelled to come to school. And we serve a community that some of those have to be careful with themselves. So that is what drives our conversations. And if the rates continue to rise, then we are looking at having to make adjustments. So I think it's always important to keep that in mind. You know, continuing with that theme, the meeting the needs of the medically fragile students. We have K995 masks, which are masks that are designed to protect others and also the people that are wearing them. And they are available and there's a link here in the presentation, which has been posted to Board Docs, where you can fill out a form and we will make sure that that child has those masks. Also, the team, and we talked a lot about this, and we have Sarah Stockwell who's here, about creating health plans for students who are medically fragile. This is no different than a student who is coming to school who might have a peanut allergy in terms of the process of developing a plan to help better protect that student from those kinds of things that might be out there that might be harmful, including COVID. And we want families to reach out to their school nurse and principal counselors to begin that conversation. We're very grateful that the board chose to expand our nurses to all buildings. We were sharing a nurse between our elementaries. But last year, the board said, you know, let's invest in having a nurse at every one of our buildings. And that's been critical for us in doing the things that we can. So Sarah, I don't know if there's anything you want to add with the medical fragile piece?
Yeah, thanks. The only piece additional is that families have the option of requesting the KN95 mask. But we can also build a health plan for our students. So if they want to do that, they'd reach out to their nurse or their principal. We would get, we have a form that we created specific to COVID-19 accommodations that a student might need. And we will send that to their pediatrician, their family physician, and get recommendations and suggestions from that doctor specific to that child's diagnosis. The school team will sit down, will go through that information and build a plan based on that for that child. So there's a couple different tiers. A child may just need a mask, but they may also need more than that. So we've tried to build that in.
So moving along, one of the things that we talked about that we were waiting for clarification in July was school transportation. And we have received that clarification and from the CDC. And then even in Ohio, they've also said that this is the case, that people that are riding in public transportation. So those of you that have traveled, who've been on airlines, you have to wear a mask. It falls under this CDC mandate that affects the whole nation. In that is, school transportation is considered public transportation. And therefore, masks are required to those that are riding buses. So that's true not just of our county. It's not just a Perrysburg thing. It's a national thing and it is a statewide thing. So, and you can see here, we polled from the CDC, we polled from the question below, from the Ohio Department of Health, their FAQ, are masks required on school buses? Yes, passengers and drivers must wear masks on school buses. So, you know, so families that haven't been masking this summer as school returns, that's something that we'll want students to have in their backpack who are going to be riding the buses. Of course, we have a number of students that walk who don't take the bus. We also have a number of students that the parents will choose to drive them, and that's always an option as well. So that is something that is an order and there's no way around that. We looked at what the consequences of violating that order is, just to see. And there are, you know, warnings and fines from $250 up to, I believe, $1,500. So I don't know who's the police that issues those fines, but I think it is something that obviously we have to comply with. So we'll have some extra masks on the bus. So if a student forgets it, you know, we'll be able to help them. But, you know, if a student chooses not to wear a mask, just like an airline, then they're not able to use that. And so we want to make sure parents understand that. With masks continuing, the Ohio Department of Health strongly recommends that those who are unvaccinated wear masks. The CDC, universal indoor masking for everyone in the school setting. And as we shared, that we're, as we're looking at coming back to school, we're strongly recommending those unvaccinated wear masks. We understand that masks are just one tool that helps stop the spread, but certainly a very critical one. Social distancing is another tool that we use. And when possible, we're looking to try to maintain social distancing as much as we can without disrupting the activity in what we're doing. So if you recall having lunch in the elementary classrooms, for example, that was something that we did. We began to transition from that at the end of last year, and we're beginning this school year with being back in the cafeteria. And so that's one of the examples of what we're doing in terms of, you know, making those adjustments as we come back to school. However, students, and I think people are used to this now, when you're waiting in line at the grocery store at Churchill's, you know, you're not standing right on top of somebody. You're trying to use social distancing and we want those queues to continue. And Sarah, please jump in anytime here you want to join in. Materials and cleaning, this is something that, you know, materials can be shared. Last year, that wasn't permissible. I think we've learned a lot about the virus and how it's transmitted. It's certainly more of an airborne virus than one that is spread through surfaces. We're still going to do a great deal with cleaning and we have some things that are still in place from last year that we're going to be doing with that. However, you know, sharing the materials is something that we're going to do. Playground equipment, recess will return as it has in the past. And again, the Plexiglas barriers that were everywhere, you'll still see those in certain areas. We still have them. And in most cases, we're not going to see those set up at this time. But we do have them and they remain optional. So if there's a situation, as Sarah pointed out, with a student, a concern, you'll begin to see those come back into play. The reporting and contact tracing, I'll turn it over to Sarah with that.
Yep. So this has changed a little bit from last year. We had an internal COVID team that was handling the majority of this. We are transitioning this now to the Wood County Health Department. We're basically going to take their lead in terms of how long students should stay out of school, that communication with families, following up with families to get questions answered in terms of who the student was or staff was in contact with. We're still obviously encouraging individuals to reach out to them and to let us know as well. Symptomatic individuals, we have our screening criteria that we used all of last year that we're going to continue to use. Our nurses will screen students and staff who may be symptomatic. The clinics will have KN95 masks in the clinics because we no longer have isolation rooms. That's no longer a requirement. But if a student or staff member is symptomatic, we want to make sure that they're masked so that we keep everyone safe. We will no longer have the COVID support, the call line that we used last year, because those calls will transition to Wood County Health Department. But we will still have our COVID support email that will be checked each day by Kit Veller. And that's where parents and families can report vaccination status. They don't have to do that, but it is helpful because if they are vaccinated, and this is on another slide, but they're not required unless they're symptomatic. and this is on another slide, but they're not required unless they're symptomatic to quarantine or isolate. So it's a positive for us to have that information. We do have the rapid test kits available as well, so we're encouraging people to use those. They'll be available at the Board Office or in their school buildings. So if a student in, say, third grade is symptomatic, they can send that child home with a rapid test kit. It's very simple to use. You watch a video. It takes about 15 minutes and you have the results. So those are available to everyone for free through the Board or the building. Do you want me to keep going?
Sure.
Okay.
Let me just apologize because I think I heard in my mind, and correct me if I'm wrong, but did I say K-995 masks?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry about that. There's no such thing. If you want that, I don't know where we could get you that. But if you want a KN95 mask, let me clarify that. So, thank you.
This is just the information that Wood County gave us in terms of what they're using to make determinations. So vaccinated students and employees do not have to quarantine or be tested if they're exposed to COVID-19. That could obviously change with the Delta variant, so we will take their lead on that. But as of right now, this is the rule, unless they become symptomatic. At that point, obviously, if they're symptomatic or they're testing positive, they should stay home. Regardless of vaccinations, students and employees should remain home and isolate for 10 days if they're positive. So vaccinated or unvaccinated. And then it's the 10-day quarantine rule now for unvaccinated students and employees who are exposed. Again, we will take that information from Wood County. We will no longer be sending letters to families from Perrysburg schools. That will now come from the Wood County Health Department. If a family knows that their child is positive or symptomatic, they would just call in using the attendance line, just like they do for any other illness. I think that's actually on the next slide. So employees are going to report their absences, just as they do with any other illness, through our frontline education system, so they know how to do that. We're going to use for attendance purposes, last year we had a COVID code. We don't want students to be penalized if they do have COVID or if they're exposed. So we're going to keep that in place for an additional year. And the attendance secretaries, we'll be working with them, but they'll actually be noting in the attendance code if the student is symptomatic, if they're positive, or if they were quarantined through the Wood County Health Department. The reason that's important right now is because we don't have our internal COVID team functioning. So we still want to be able to extract that data. If for some reason the Board wants that information or the public, we want to be able to extract that and pull that out. So we're going to code a little bit more specifics in our attendance coding this year. Again, a communication will come from the Health Department. At the Perrysburg High School, we're going to keep the perfect attendance incentives suspended for this year because again, we want to make sure that students are not penalized for having COVID or being exposed. Make-up work will work the same way. They'll communicate directly with their teachers. And again, families should just report that information directly through the attendance line.
And we're continuing to, you know, look at our classrooms in terms of ventilation. That's one of the things that we did last year in terms of working with the contractors to maximize the amount of outside air that is being brought into the district. So there's some settings that you can do to help bring in more of that outside air. Increased filter changes, we began to do that all last year and that will continue this year. And of course, bathroom exhaust fans to ensure proper operation. So, you know, that is something that began last year. Those fans often, you know, a lot of our buildings are older. We wanted to make sure all those were up and running. Steps were taken to do that, and that was important for us. As we look at food and beverages, we'll follow the regular food and beverages guidance outlined in all the school handbooks. All schools will have students eating in the cafeteria. Plexiglas is not required, but as we shared, you might see that return in some instances for a variety of reasons. And again, we're asking students to distance as much as possible when in the cafeteria. And that's just good practices that hopefully people are doing today as they make their way around life. So we want those lessons to be brought into school. Meetings right now, Zoom meetings will still be an option for parents. That's something that we heard last year, that attendance for many meetings increased when Zooming was an option for them. So we wanted to continue that, not only out of safety precautions, but just convenience. We learned that we could do those things and make it work well. Of course, Boards are not part of that. This is just part of the school. So we still have those face-to-face meetings now. But parent guardian meetings will continue with Zoom. In-persons can happen at the request of either the school or the parents. Sometimes there are those kinds of meetings that it's just better to have it in person based on what's going to be discussed. And when those situations happen, we're first going to see if meeting in person can happen. Building and department meetings may resume. We had our administrative team meeting yesterday. It was in person. As of last year, it was, you know, it wasn't. It was through Zoom, so we'll begin to see those things happen. And again, flexibility, right? We have to make sure that if the numbers change, things change. These guidelines may change very quickly too. But for the start of the school year, we're comfortable with taking this first step. Something that did come out since our last Board meeting was that schools should limit nonessential visitors. That was the guidance from ODH. I don't know, we're sorting out, we had a conversation yesterday in terms of what are nonessential visitors to schools? So we're kind of filtering through what that may mean. But I think the general idea is if you've got school business that you need to attend, yes, you're there. But if it's optional, if it's not something that has to be done, or that person is arriving at the school and there's no official business, we just want to limit the contacts and exposures to outside folks. And then the procedures will follow the guidelines that we have. Transportation, high school busing will resume. And that's because we are now putting more students on the bus to make that possible. You might recall last year, we had to reduce the high school transportation because we needed more buses to transport elementary students. This is very tricky for us because the law says here in Ohio that once you start transporting students and providing those services, you can't take them away in the middle of the year. So I'm not sure exactly how, if we get to a place that we have to have social distancing six feet on the bus that was mandated last year, if that returns exactly how we will do that. So we'll have to have some legislative relief if that were to pass. The other thing too, that I'll mention at this point, is that there is a bill that was passed and signed into law. It takes effect on October 13th. It's House Bill 244, which says that you cannot discriminate against students who are, people who are vaccinated and not vaccinated based on a non-FDA-approved vaccine, which the currently vaccine for COVID falls under that category. We're not sure exactly the full impact of what that may mean. So for example, a lot of the districts have been a little bit handcuffed with some of the back-to-school planning because if you're requiring masks for all students on October 13th, when this law takes effect, you could have two potential problems. One, are you discriminating against, you know, having vaccinated? You know, if you say a situation, for example, students who are not vaccinated need to wear masks, would that be a violation of that law? And there's some interpretations that, yeah, that would be. If you have everybody wearing a mask, there's also been some talk about then, are you facing potential litigation because you're requiring a medical device of an otherwise healthy individual? And what right do you have to do that? So there's some interesting things that have popped up across the state relative to that law and relative to these other kinds of things that make it a little bit tricky in terms of unilaterally going off and trying to make those decisions. So that's why I think we just have to be flexible with what we do. Transportation, it's pretty cut and dry. The CDC did a mandate and there's no debate. Everyone across the state is saying, yes, that is the rule. So that's one of the nice things about a mandate is it makes it very clear. When there are strongly, strong recommendations, then we're having conversations like this that we'll have to be revisiting if the numbers, you know, take a significant, you know, increase. Capacity for different outdoor gatherings and indoor gatherings, there's no capacity limits. Last year, we were dealing with that. As sports returned, we were dealing with, you know, limiting the number of spectators. That's been lifted. OHSAA, which governs high school athletics, has also said full spectators in the fall. We encourage teachers and staff members and students that are eligible to get a vaccine to do that. We're seeing that the people that are getting into more serious health issues are those that are not vaccinated and certainly we just want to call attention to that. We don't have the specific number, and that was the nine o'clock text messages. Do we have a hard number for the percent or the number of our staff that have been vaccinated? And we don't. But we can say that a significant number of our staff has been vaccinated. And I think that will help keep us there. The substitute issue continues to be a challenge. I know Kelly Johnson is continuing to interview and hire subs. Usually, there's a little bit of a reprieve at the start of the year. And then we get going and have an adequate number, but this has been an ongoing piece. That's going to continue to be a challenge this upcoming school year as well. And that can have implications. So having staff that is vaccinated allows them to remain in place if they've been exposed to somebody who has had COVID as long as they follow the guidelines that Sarah outlined. Last year, because of, you know, the quarantine rules before the vaccine, we had to close the building because we didn't have enough staff, enough subs to operate. So that's a, you know, a plus. Northwest Ohio, the V Project is out there and you can find more information about vaccines and clinics and interviews with medical professionals who are talking about, you know, what they understand about the vaccine. And certainly, we're going to continue to work to, you know, make the schools available as a clinic. Those were very successful, even over the summer. Had hundreds of people that came to the clinics and will be continuing to offer those. So that concludes our presentation and be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
I do have one about quarantine. It was my understanding that you cannot discriminate against a vaccinated or a non-vaccinated person. And therefore, what I was told was if you are exposed, nobody can say, were you vaccinated or were you not? They just have to say, you have to quarantine. And that is not true? I know some schools are following that guideline.
So that's, first of all, that won't take effect until October 13th. So until that time, I know that, I think as we get closer to that date, I think the health departments are going to provide some kind of guidance because again, this has really returned back to the health department, their responsibility to issue those. You know, we're dealing with laws, we're dealing with language. There might be some, I've heard some talk, not here in Wood County, but other areas where they're talking about the health department excluding individuals and sending a letter to school districts saying these students are, these people are to be excluded, you know. And so what rights does the health department still maintain? And how does that conflict with that law? So I think there's going to be more conversations about that, Mrs. Downs, to determine whether or not what can and can't be done. But there might be some interesting things that the health department, tools that they have that they might be able to use that doesn't quite fit that language and has nothing to do with the vaccine. So whether you've been vaccinated or not, these are the lists of people that need to be excluded. I mean, I don't know how they're going to handle that, but I know they're thinking about it, having discussions about it. And they may be able to make determinations not based on the vaccine, maybe other reasons. So I'm not 100% sure. And again, there hasn't been a conversation locally about that. I'm just taking in secondhand information, so.
And do we have the right to ask students if they've been vaccinated? That's another thing that I've heard, that they do not have to answer that one way or another.
So my understanding, and Sarah can jump in to help or bail me out, the, where that would become a question is if there is contact tracing to be done. And obviously, whoever is asking that question, the health department would need to know whether or not you're vaccinated or not to determine whether or not you have to be quarantined. So at that point in time, because of the student status in school, we may become aware through that process of who's vaccinated because that student won't be possibly, depending on how the whole House Bill 244 plays out, able to return to school. And so those are the kinds of things that we would know. We do get questions about, you know, it's not your right, those are my children and medically, you're not, you know, schools are just teaching and you don't have any right. Well, we do, based on the current law with other vaccines. So we do keep records because doctors have to provide us with information regarding that child's meeting the requirement of the different vaccines that are legal. There are some exemptions, parents have to work through those. So you just can't say, I'm not going to answer that. You have to provide some type of either records that you've been vaccinated or not. I would argue that Perrysburg Schools is next to Wood County Hospital, probably administers more medications than any other agency in the county. So we work very closely with families and physicians because students who are in school, 5,700 of them, a number of them are taking medications during the day. We work with doctors. We have nurses that are health aides that are there to distribute those, the medicine. And so that's something that, you know, we're very familiar with. When students are out for a period of time, they had surgery, the doctors communicate with us. We come up with medical plans. We have OT, we have PT, we have nurses. We provide a full contingent of supports for students that people would be very surprised at what we do to help support students in the learning environment. So we already have a lot of information about students' health because we have to, to make sure that they're safe and to make sure that we're helping students be successful in the classroom. So asking whether or not, you know, that they're vaccinated or not, that's not one of the required vaccines, but it could come into play depending on when, you know, there's an exposure that takes place.
So in regards to that, so if I am a parent of a child, I send a child who's under 12, cannot be vaccinated, so question that need to be asked, they're wearing a mask. They're wearing a mask and there's social distancing, yet now there's an exposure in the classroom. And I was close to that person, but I have a mask on. Is that person, am I going to be quarantined? CDC is going to ask that question? Is the school is going to ask that question? I feel that's coming toward me with some questions from the community. I mask up, they're positive, I stay, you go.
So based on last year, the answer would be yes. If you were within that three foot for 15 minutes, that yes, you would have to quarantine. We're obviously turning that over to the Wood County Health Department. I have not heard that any of those rules have changed, so I'm assuming that it would be the same.
Okay, so mask, three feet, 15 minutes, I mean, these are all the criteria, right?
Yeah, it hasn't changed as far as I know.
Even though I sent out my student with a mask, my child with a mask, I still would be quarantined for 10 days.
Correct.
So if I don't have a mask on, same situation, I'm quarantined for 10 days.
Correct.
And these decisions that parents will have to make for those who are not vaccinated.
Absolutely.
Well, actually, for everybody, regardless of your vaccinated or not.
I have a question about going back to the school buses. Because I was with Courtney on the idea that school buses should not fall under the public transportation thing. I totally agreed with her on that. So I was a little surprised, sort of, that we're getting hit with this. But you mentioned that there could be fines. Who's getting fined? Is it the school district that would get fined? Or is it going to be the offender? It better be the offender.
Right. So with that conversation and the information that we received, you know, one of the questions was, well, what is the consequence? What if Perrysburg Schools unilaterally said, we're not going to follow that? So to be prepared to answer that question, not that I'm advocating for that, what are, what is that? So in that, when you go to the CDC and you dig into it a little bit, they have, these are the fines that can occur. I think the, I think with airlines, I think there's been some fines issued. It's all to passengers. I don't think there's been a case where an airline or somebody has just refused to do it. I don't know what the consequence would be for that. But the only reason I share that is that we're not But the only reason I share that is that we're not threatening that. That's not for us to assign fines. Just to answer the question that I had received, why I had to research it, which was, well, what is the consequence? What if we just looked the other way? Well, people need to know that that could lead to potential fines. It's in the mandate and the guidelines. So I just want to be clear and upfront about that. There are, it is in there, whether it's happening or schools are doing it, I'm not 100% sure.
So then the question is, is like you said, who's the mask police?
Right, yeah, and I don't know. I don't know the, you know, if it's the US Department of Transportation, FAA, I don't know. So I don't sense that it's the local police or the sheriff's office. I don't think that's it. But again, it is a serious thing. There is a consequence attached. So if the student chooses to get on the bus and they take their mask off, you know, you need to keep your mask on. The next day, they come on, they take their mask off again. Now, that is putting others at risk of violating this. They're violating this, so at that point in time, that person may not be able to ride the bus if they're not willing to comply. And that's just true with other, you know, public transit with airlines and so forth. So if you're refusing to wear the mask, then you have to, you can't fly. The same rules that they're following, we're following here. So we'll have extras available because people will forget. They've been out of that habit this summer. So we'll do our best to make sure that, you know, we're not turning people away. But if there is a student who is refusing, that moves it from forgetting into another category. So we hope we can avoid that by sharing this with families so they can make those decisions now, so.
Banning, excuse me, banning mask mandates has occurred in a handful of states. Any insight, what are the chances that some sort of ban on us being able to do a mask mandate out there in the state of Ohio?
So there was a Senate bill that was introduced, and they're not in session. So when they returned to session, I think there will be some discussions possibly in Ohio as to, you know, banning masks in public institutions. So for schools specifically, K-12 and public universities. Ohio State, I saw, announced yesterday or early this morning that they're requiring masks on campus for everybody. So that bill, as introduced, would prohibit that from happening. So you're beginning to see universities move in that direction, but again, there's a lot of ground to cover, and we're not sure what that will lead in terms of these bills and laws that have been passed, so.
That's why, it would certainly help if I wore a mask and you're tested positive, I wouldn't be quarantined. That really would help, because why would a parent, I mean, I understand that we're getting some emails about, wear a mask, I don't want my kid wearing masks, both sides of coin there. It's just difficult when you still mask up to protect yourself, but you're still going to be quarantined, you're not positive. But we can't control that. We're making decisions, things we can't control, which is very frustrating when you're on a board to hear everybody else give you the rules, and you decide what you want to do.
And that's, I think that's a good point, Mr. Pullman. When we, if we have, again, when we were dealing with COVID last year, we took steps to, you know, students were all in masks, staff were masked, desks were set apart as much as we could. We kept students in pods to limit the number that were being quarantined at the elementary levels. If you recall and go back through past presentations, there were a low number of students that were positive for COVID at the elementary level and then had to be vaccinated. And so we can pull up those presentations, because we kept track of what those were at every building for the whole year. It's not to say that things won't change with this variant, because it is different. So we can't say exactly what happened last year will happen this year, because it's a different animal. But we know how the animal behaves, we know its environment, and if we get into a situation where we have disruption, where students are, you know, not able to attend class, that's what we want to mitigate. So if that means to get more students able to attend class more regularly, we may begin to take steps where we're asking for masking, like we did last year, where we're asking desks to be separated, maybe we change with how we're doing lunches. That's the roadmap that we had last year to keep the schools open when there was a high level of transmission. So we know that there's steps that we can do if we begin to see those numbers uptick to try to reduce the number of kids that are going to be quarantined. So if we see that happen, we'll be able to make those decisions and adjustments. But again, it could change, it is changing, but we had only 32 new cases in the whole county. So the chances of us starting school with students who have COVID is very low, because there's just a low, you know, number across the county. But we know that that number's increasing in other areas, and it will increase here. The Delta variant hasn't been found here in Wood County, it's just a matter of time. And so we'll be having to continue to be vigilant with what we're doing to protect kids, but also to keep them in school. Because if we're careless, then we're going to have, and it's prevalent, we're going to have lots of kids out quarantining, missing school, and we want to avoid that. So it's finding that balance, and I think we're proposing to start the school year with the right balance, and perhaps if things change, we're going to have to adjust how we're, you know, proceeding, so.
And the Wood County Fair started last night, and it was packed. I've never, in 25 years I've been involved with the fair, never have I seen a line of people trying to buy tickets. It was all the way from the main gate, all the way to Brim Road, people waiting to get in. It was absolutely packed, I make this thought. Okay, this could be interesting. I'm sure the people in the health department are just sweating bullets at this particular point.
Yeah, and to your point, there were probably people in masks.
There were a few, yes.
And people were not in, you know, masks. And we're not saying that masks are prohibited. If you're that parent of an elementary child and you want your child in a mask, that is something that you have every right to do, to protect that child, and so that is something that's going to happen. So, and we're strongly recommending that that, in fact, is what happens, but we're leaving it up to those families to make that determination. So we're not saying no to masks. We're just saying that we're strongly recommending it, and that falls in line with what the CDC and others are saying to do. Last year, they mandated us to wear masks. This year, they're recommending, and we're following their lead like we did last year, so.
Question about the HVHC. I know at HPI, we updated that, and from my understanding, we were going to do an air quality control test or some kind of test. And has that been done? And if so, what are the results?
Yeah, I don't have the results of those. I know the air quality is something that we continue to monitor, so I'll just have to get back to you on what those are, so.
At all buildings, we monitor that?
I'd have to check on that.
Okay, can you get back to us on that, please?
Well, the high vaccination rate in Wood County is really encouraging. I think there's some studies, I might have just read it this morning, out in Israel, they're saying adults that are highly protected, you know, that barrier that you referred to kind of translates to those unvaccinated children, too, so hopefully that keeps up, gets better. But I agree, I've been struggling these past few weeks, thinking we were going against the medical experts, and I know I spent the last year saying, we listen to the experts, we listen to the experts. Your slide there showing that we are still following, you know, strongly recommending is what the experts are saying, that gives me a lot of comfort.
Any other questions?
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Hostler.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
So hoping we could be off that topic, but obviously, it's something that we cannot stay away from yet, so hopefully we can get through this. It takes us to the consent agenda, and if you take a look again, there's some items that are typically there at this time of the year, changes in personnel, resignations, supplementals, and so forth. That would take us, consent would be five through six. They have a motion to accept the consent agenda, so moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All right, roll call, please, Mr. Scott.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes.
Mrs. Downs.
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank.
Yes.
Mrs. Lerner.
Yes.
Mr. Pullman.
Yes. Motion carries. And then we go to a board discussion. I think that we probably should make sure we got our dates straight now, a refresher. August the 18th is the opening day for our staff.
Yes.
Anything else that the board needs to know, said the time is, what, eight o'clock?
I believe so, correct.
I think we received some information on that from Hannah, so if we want to check your calendars on that.
August 16th.
August 16th, Monday.
Oh, 16th.
Sorry about that. Yeah, the 18th would put you in the jack of jumpstart, so I don't think you want to be part of that.
Yeah, 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 sorry, it's the 16th.
So, yeah, opening day is on the 16th, so we look forward to that, and, you know, certainly, it's a big day for staff, so.
And of course, that evening is also a board meeting, too, 5:30, so, 16th. And then, of course, this Thursday, we'll see everybody for a 2:00 meeting here for our interviews, so. Any other board discussion?
Yeah, hopefully I brought it with me. I know I stuck it somewhere. Here they are. You take one, pass it down, that, well, maybe I'll just pass it out. I was, you've probably heard of the Keep Watch organization, and they are actively asking us to allow them to come and visit. This is always done when students are not in the buildings, and they have approached us before in the past, and I thought, wow, okay. So I listened to her presentation the other day, and the success that they've had across the country, because it's now a national organization. So I thought I would bring those, you can take a look at it. Especially the red one on the other side gives you a website that you can go to to watch videos that would explain it, but I would like us to think about the possibility of them coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, too. Anybody else?
If I could just echo, the board is having a special board meeting. Mr. Pullman mentioned it on Thursday, so that will be posted today. It's a special board meeting to conduct interviews for the treasurer position. There's no expected action items there, but certainly check the agenda. So folks see a special board meeting, we just wanted to echo what Mr. Pullman said, that the purpose of that, which will be in the meeting notes, is to do the interviews.
That's not this Thursday. I thought it was next Thursday.
No, this Thursday.
This Thursday.
Oh, I would have come the wrong day.
That's why we review, because.
There's another one after that.
Yeah, there's another one, two weeks later.
What, the 19th or something?
Oh, that's right, okay, I have them both, never mind.
Yeah.
Anybody else, any discussion? Almost seems like we shouldn't adjourn yet, but that's.
Then I move, we adjourn.
It's your second.
Second.
Eric, motion to adjourn, and Kelly, second.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes.
Mrs. Downs.
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank.
Yes.
Mrs. Lerner.
Yes.
Mr. Pullman.
Yes, meetings adjourned. Thank you very much for attending. We'll see you on Thursday.